Let's remain standing. Good evening, this evening our kind to Heavenly Father. Just want to stand and say you did it again. You brought us here to this council meeting. You brought the citizens here. Brought us all here to discuss our county business. We thank you for it, Lord. We ask that you bless our minds and our hearts that we can make the right decisions here. And we ask that you watch over the citizens of Chester County during this holiday, this holiday week. Keep us all safe. Keep us all in your care. These and all other things, I ask in your son Jesus' name we pray. Amen. While I'm standing, I want to wish Council McKilian a happy birthday. He had a birthday yesterday. He was thirty-eight years old.
Thirty-eight years.
All right. Before we get started with the approval of minutes, I'd like to make an adjustments on the agenda here under five A. This will not be the third reading. It'll be in the public hearing only, so I'd like to have a motion to state that, please.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Got a motion to that this will be only in the public hearing and will not be voted on as the third reading is listed. So you got a second?
Second.
Second. Got a motion, second, in the discussion? Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay. Moving along to approval of minutes, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. And motion on approval of minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Second?
Second.
Okay. In the discussion. Hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Oh, okay. The minutes for June twentieth, twenty twenty-three minutes?
I move seven minutes, June twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
All right, and then a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wilson. In the discussion, hear no discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay. On the citizens' comments, we have one citizen signed up, Ms. Karen Hutto. State your name and your address and...
Yes. Karen Hutto, Darby Road in Chester. Hello, everybody. The reason I'm here tonight, I am part of a board with Chester Downtown Development Association as design. Is that...
See?
Pull it to you just a little bit.
Just put it closer there.
Okay. I mean, I don't really need it. But anyway, I'm here with Chester Downtown Development Association. We are starting a new project, long overdue and greatly needed, and that is the beautification of Chester, starting downtown on top of the hill with the brick planters that have been there for probably fifteen years, and I don't remember anything ever being in them. It's going to start downtown. It's not going to stop just downtown. I'm going to, we're going to keep going, starting on top of the hill, all the public buildings, and just keep going all the way down the hill in any grassy area and any areas, really, that are not grass. I'm really big into plants and flowers, that's all I do. So anyway, hanging baskets, huge concrete planters, benches, whatever we can come up with, and that's the goal. So that's it. Just letting you know of this project starting as soon as we, as pressure washing and getting new waterheads on the existing sprinkler system that I'm greatly surprised it's already there, then it will start. That's it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We're going to open up the public hearing here for the, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a special source revenue credit agreement by the, by between the county and Project Twenty-two Forty-seven in connection with the establishment of certain facilities located in the county. The benefits of a multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the Project Twenty-two Forty-seven and the property, and third, for other related matters. And does it have anybody that would like to speak? Has anyone have anybody signed up? Nobody will speak on that? Okay. Okay. And the public hearings for the third reading of the twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, amending ordinance number twenty eighteen dash eleven as amended and clarified by ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, provide for the allocation of fee in lieu of taxes, revenues for some properties located in Chester, in the county, and providing for other related matters. Don't have anybody signed up that they'd like to speak on that? If not, we'll close the public hearing. All right, moving on to ordinance and resolutions and proclamations. Third reading of the twenty fifteen, twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, amending the ordinance of twenty eighteen dash eleven as amended and clarified by ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirteen, to provide for the allocation of fee in lieu of taxes, revenue for some properties located in the county and providing for other related matters. Need a motion for that?
I make a motion, we approve the third reading of twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
All right, and then second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Wilson? All right. Any discussion?
What property is it?
You got a location on there that have to go on page ten?
Oh. So that's not a piece, that's not a piece of property? That is the reallocation of the fee in lieu?
No, no property is this lot.
Or do you want to know where it starts?
I think the public needs to know what we're talking about.
So, if I may?
Yeah.
Go ahead. So this is the ordinance that will provide for the reallocation of the fee in lieu of tax, or it is the allocation, but it's the ordinance that is amending that. So this will be post-Gateway. And so the allocation will be seventy-six percent of fee in lieu will go to the county's general fund, fifteen percent will go to the school district, four percent to economic development, and five percent will go to the fire district within which the business is located, whether it comes to or is located currently. That starts, and I've got a couple of printouts, but if you go back, we call it post-Gateway, which can be a little confusion, confusing, but the easiest way is from Boise Cascade on down to the Gateway Refinance. The Gateway, obviously, those fee in loos are attached to the Gateway itself or the refinance of the Gateway. So it goes basically from Boise down to United Natural Foods, and then anything going further in the future as well.
Okay. Any further comments? Hear none, all in favor of the third reading of twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay. This will be the second reading of twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, an ordinance to amend the Chester County Gateway Restrict District Master Plan, Master Plan Steering Committee Enabling Act, which is found on our page thirteen on this. So need a motion on that?
Make a motion, we have second reading, approved second reading of twenty twenty-three dash sixteen.
Okay. And then a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Mosley. Any discussion on this? I think on this particular one here, that the major change on that one is where we are going to vote in at least a minimum of four people from out of the county that has a vested interest in Chester County, and also that the other thing that's been changed is for the committee to send a written minutes to the council so we can read it, and that Mr. Hester will be the one that they contact about any recommendations or whatever. And I think that's some of the main issues in this ordinance here, so that...
I think it's a maximum of four people.
Max, a maximum?
Yes.
Yeah, I said minimum.
I think so.
Oh, I see. Okay.
That's correct. It is up to four.
Up to four. Up to four, yeah. Excuse me for that slip of the tongue.
Again, and council has to approve what that vested interest is.
Yeah. Has to put it on the vested interest. So it, I think it's going to be a good thing because it's a lot of people that's got a lot of investment in Chester County that needs to be on that board. So any further discussion? Hear no further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay. On the C, the second reading of twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, an ordinance to amend the Chester County procurement policy, found on page nineteen.
I make a motion that we approve the second reading of twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, ordinance to amend the county procurement policy.
Second. They got a most, any discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I told you all the last time that I really enjoyed looking at procurement policy, and I spent my entire day going through this, buying too. And I don't want to take up tonight, the Fourth of July being tomorrow, to look at that. But there's a lot of things in this that are redundant, a lot of things in here that need to be clarified, what Mr. Hester's role is in being the administrator of the county versus all of this thing, that there's a lot of stuff in here that leaves him out. And I think one thing we all agree is he's doing a pretty darn good job for the county. And what I would like to do is get with Mr. Hester, voice my concerns to him, and let him redo some of these things to come back for the, either the second or the third reading. I don't mind, I don't mind passing the second reading right now, but I would like to have the opportunity to sit down with he and go through this and get some of these things out. There's several in here, in particular where an employee could be liable for indebted in the county by just mistake or doing it, whatever, but it doesn't clarify enough to say that Mr. Billy Bob signed the purchase order that he was not authorized to sign, but it says in here if he does that, then he's clearly liable for indebted in the county personally. So I think we need to look at all of those types of things and get some of that straightened out. I'm sure he's going to ask Ms. Winters about some of them, but that's my suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I think that was in the plan to start with, to revamp this and revise and go through and come up with those recommendations. And if you, I feel sure Mr. Hester will be glad to sit down and go of your concerns with you at that time. So if Mr. Hester would make time for that for him...
Absolutely. And it's a fluid document right now. We spent last Friday, probably about three hours actually going through it, and there was a lot more changes there. So we wanted to give it to council for that reason, so everyone could have the three readings to have input on things that they saw. Our main goal with this was to make our procurement process more efficient and to update some of the limitations and dollar amounts to, that were, you know, too low or too cumbersome. And so I think we've kind of hit those points. And as we, we actually page by page it, but again, there's so much here to read, and as we focused on certain areas, I welcome the input over the next couple of weeks. I would like to, if you do have any, if anyone on council wants to take some time to go through that or has suggestions, that we get that done as soon as possible. I would like to be able to get the new policy in place as close to the beginning of this month, which we're in, because we're under a new fiscal year. So if we can make it happen at all within the next two weeks, that'd be great.
I had two questions. One is, I had never read the part where it talks about, it says, "This permits the lowest local Chester County or its municipalities bidder, whose bid is within seven percent of the lowest non-local bidder to be awarded the project with the approval of county council." That's not anything new, but that's certainly not anything that I ever remember us really using. It is new?
It is new.
Okay. It's not, the document we have isn't highlighted in such a way that it shows that it's new.
Okay.
The last version showed it as being new.
What page are you on?
Okay. I'm on, I'm looking at the packet on page... Oh, goodness.
It'll help me if I look at it on my sheets.
Yep, yep, yep. Well, I lost it. Nope, twenty... Yeah. Page twenty-three under C, letter C, contract authority.
Mine's not the same as yours, sorry.
It's on the packet page. I'll tell you. Twenty-three, but I'm fixing to tell you the right page. It is page forty-four, I think. It's page twenty-three.
I got it.
I think he's still looking for it.
He's still looking.
Maybe.
You want to look at it, Mr. Agee, or you, is that okay?
Or Mr. Hester, I think, is looking for it.
I think probably Ms. Koch's laid awake at night trying to go through all this because it's quite an extensive document. And like Mr. Agee said, you could spend a better part of a day reading through the whole thing, so it's extensive on this.
So if we could talk a little bit more about that, about the idea of awarding a bid seven percent to a local bidder? I'll let Mr. Hester do what he's doing.
Now, that's seven percent for the, if you're a local, Billy Bob's Construction Company, they did a seven percent discount for the psych argument on the bid because they're local.
So that idea's been kicked around for a while, that we do that. I guess my concern there would be, we might need to have additional policy in place to make sure that's, are we going to always do that? Are we going to do it sometimes and not always? Is it going to be for any bid, or is it only for bids over a hundred thousand dollars? What's going to be kind of our rules? Because I feel like there's still, unless there's more in this that I haven't read, which I've read it, but maybe I missed it, it seems like there's a lot of gaps missing here, and I could see where that could get us in trouble of not being consistent.
Well, I've got it on page three. I'm not sure what page it is on your section.
That was on, okay. Page three on the thing, yeah. It's a page twenty-something on our agenda packet, twenty-three on our agenda packet, page three on our, yes.
Yeah. We wanted to, I know we wanted to have it for the local vendors, for, I guess, for any type of bid. I mean, if, I welcome your input on the dollar amount. I know other counties do that for a five to seven percent. We've had, you know, other counties do it for seven percent, but they don't, they have not put a stipulation on the dollar amount, and so that we kind of went with other counties the way that they do it in theirs, other South Carolina counties.
So would that be an automatic thing, where if they're a local bid, will they be certified as a local bidder? Like even before we open the bids, we will know who the local bidders are? So there's not this back and forth, oh, we're actually local, or you're not?
Right. We would have to find, to check and make sure they are legitimately a local bidder.
So they need to almost apply, when they place their bid, it needs to be a checkbox at the top of the RFP that they submit, you know, their submission showing that they're local.
Local, yes. We're going to have to put something in the, in the bid documents stating that they are a certified local bidder.
And has, do you, are you aware of any other counties have seen the number of bids from outside the county go down when they've implemented this policy?
There's not usually a lot. There's been a few, but not, it's not a tremendous amount.
We need to track that, because it could be an unintended consequence if we start having fewer people bid, if they feel that they're going to be unlikely to get it. All I'm really saying is, I'm not opposed to it, I just want to make sure that we have some really good policies there, so we're consistent. It needs to be very automatic. If that's our policy, then if you're within seven percent, it's not going to be this time we do it and that time we didn't. That's going to get us in trouble.
Well, I think where it gets you in trouble, Pete, when I read that, is that they don't necessarily, in reading this document, they don't necessarily have to take the low bid. They can make a decision not to take the low bid. And if the low bid is a seven percent, somebody from Chester County, and you don't take their bid for whatever reason, it just opens up a can of worms that I don't think we need to do. I think we need to clarify exactly what you just asked, and that's one of the, one of the things I have that I looked at, because the state of South Carolina gives a automatic deduction, when I was with the state, for people that are state contractors live in the state of South Carolina, they get, I think it's ten percent, I might be wrong, but there's some process where they get that automatically, but there's no primary reason to be like we're trying to do, we're trying to say, well, if Billy Bob bids this, and he's not the low bidder, but he's from Chester County, then why, why don't we give it to him? And that's why I think what I was talking about, sitting down and getting all this stuff squared away before we get up here and spend all night talking about something.
Right. And I'll just, let me address, the intention of that, obviously, is only for something that's going to go out to RFP, correct? So a hundred thousand or more, not for the, not for any of the other numbers or qualifications in there, because they're, they're broken up into dollar amounts as far as the requirements for each dollar amount. It's spelled out pretty, pretty well with regard to that. The seven percent is intended to promote our economics in our county, and that's really the intention of that. Now, may we need to look at seven percent, because if you're talking about a ten million dollar project, that can get, that's a hefty number to eat just based on a policy we have here. So we, we may, I think the right thing is go back and revisit the wording of that and figure out where our limits are.
And why are we wanting to limit that? I'm just asking, I don't, just asking. A hundred thousand, why, why, why for only a hundred thousand plus?
I'm sorry?
Why are you wanting to do the seven percent for large projects and not the mid-sized projects? What's the thought behind that?
That's the amount that we're going to go out for actual RFP, is the, that's the dollar amount that we start out for the RFPs now, if we go with this.
We have a lot of latitude in the other ones, and all the other quotes, because it doesn't go out for sealed bid, were not held to the same. I have more latitude based on, just like the cleaning contract, where we chose a local company that wasn't necessarily the lowest company either. So I think that the other ones, we have more latitude in our choices, and whereas a sealed bid, Ms. Winters, correct me if I'm wrong, we're locked, we could, we could be, there's legal ramifications for us not following certain parameters. So this writes in the ability to us to give preference to a local bidder, whereas for some of those other dollar amounts in the process we have, there's not the same type of legal ramifications. Am I correct there?
My only other point, one other point, is when you read this, it's pretty specific about for a hundred thousand plus as well as twenty-five to a hundred thousand, that there must be three bids. So we might want to make sure we give ourselves the latitude we need there. I see the latitude for ten thousand to twenty-five thousand and under ten thousand, that latitude is written in there, but I don't see it between twenty-five and a hundred as well as a hundred plus.
I think it's on another, so I think there's another page. Ms. Winters, you have to tell me where it's at.
I'm looking at page three and the top of page four.
Right. There's another area that also gives me the authority if we don't have the number of bids, and I'm sorry, I can't tell you where it is exactly right now.
For clarity, it might be a good, good thing to add it there, too, as well. Since just below that, it talks about that wiggle room, whereas, but at the higher amounts, it leaves that out.
I think what would be helpful to me is if anyone can meet with me over the next two weeks to discuss this, to send me an email with page numbers, the ones that are at the bottom corner, left corner, those page numbers and paragraph section, or just a picture in the email of the highlighted area that is of concern. I don't want to inundate you guys, but this is a pretty hefty document for us to rework and try to, try to hit all the points that we're trying to point. Ms. Winters and myself and Ms. Koch spent all of Friday morning going through it. And again, I know we don't hit, we don't catch it all, but I appreciate all the input because those things that we don't catch as we go through it...
Well, is it possible, if you're going to set up something with Mr. Agee, to set up maybe a little workshop where we all can attend and interject what we all think before the third reading?
I'd be happy to.
So that we won't have to do it, do it all, you know, here in public?
If I can, if I can pull everybody, if we can pull everybody together, we'll probably have to push back our third reading for that, but we will make it happen.
I mean, that way we really can narrow it down, and we all can really interject how we feel and throw it around the table a little bit before we can, so that everybody ingests it and everybody's okay with it.
Okay.
Because I think there might could be a little bit of tightening of the language, local, because sometimes it may, is it local to the project or is it local to Chester County? I don't want to get into that.
Okay.
You know, so maybe just...
So a workshop is our consensus on this? And this is one, Ms. Winters, you have?
We have a public hearing scheduled, so we'll have to address that. Okay. That's the public hearing. It's not a problem, but we'll have to address it, it's already been published.
By your own page three, just to give you an example of what you probably didn't catch that I think concerns me, is an objective B. The overall goal is to maintain and continue to supply goods as a timely fashion at the lowest cost, consistent desired quantity, and being environmentally friendly for both the short and long-term interests of Chester County. That sounds great, nobody didn't question that. But if you bought A-triple-F foam to fight fires in Chester County, well, that's not environmentally friendly. That's endangering the lives and safety of the firefighters with A-triple-F foam, that you wouldn't have any clue what I just got through saying. But those are the kind of issues in here that I picked up. I mean, you wouldn't do anything to hurt anybody.
Right.
But A-triple-F foam is something you don't want to ever use anymore because of what it does to cancer-causing products in it. That's not an environmentally friendly product.
But wouldn't the firefighter or the person in charge of that know that?
I'm not, I'm not thought of, I'm not, I'm not thought of rock, I'm just saying, these are some questions that need to be answered, because I'm going to ask them, because I do know that.
I think Mr. Hester said, agreed to have a workshop. I know we could go on here for, and on and on about this tonight here, but I think if you get your questions in line and have it either, let him know ahead of time, or if he sets up a workshop, I think that'd be a good time to discuss this, because I think we could probably go on and on here with this tonight, so we're going, if it's in agreement, if everybody in agreement for the workshop?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I think we need a workshop.
All right. Well, we got a motion and a second there for the amendment, reading, second reading of twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, the amendment of the procurement policy. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, on the old business, the third reading of C C M A twenty-three dash zero six, E and J. Gallo, winery request zero point two four acres and...
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. You missed the administrator's report.
Oh, I'm sorry. I overlooked that.
It was on the very bottom. I missed it.
Yeah. Trying to get us out of here a little sooner. Y'all know what happens.
I missed it too.
Okay. Mr. Hester, we'll go back, we'll reverse and go back to you on the administrative part of that.
I do my best to make it brief, sir. Well, I sent out the June twenty-ninth, on June twenty-ninth, sent out the week of June twenty-six, administrator's report. If you have any questions or anything you want to discuss on that, Mr. Wilson did bring to my attention that I had an intersection on there with regard to the God Share Program, and I, I had to go back and look at it today, and I confused myself, I looked at so many roads and streets. But long and short of that is the COG is looking for projects. It was actually the last one there where I had Pine Ridge and Three Twenty-One, it's actually Pine Ridge and Ninety-seven. These are not set in stone that... And I had to go back and look at it today and I confused myself. I looked at so many roads and streets. But the long and short of that is the COG is looking for projects. It was actually the last one there where I had Pine Ridge and 321. It's actually Pine Ridge and 97. These are not set in stone that those were added. It was just roads, the COG reviews those, their group that looks at these transportation improvement plans. And now that they're not doing the repaving projects, and I hope everybody understood why they're not doing the repaving projects anymore. Did you guys catch that in the report, everybody?
Could you reiterate, please?
So the reason that they aren't is because these are long-term plans. They were a five-year plan, now they've gone all the way to a 10-year plan. So if you put a repaving project on there, it could be 10 years before that road gets repaved. Well, by the time they get around to doing it through God Share funds, DOT's already come in the backside and repaved the road. And that was happening quite a bit. And thus, they were left with no projects because the projects were already done when it came to repaving. So the repaving projects are gone. So they're looking at sidewalks, intersections, widening, adding shoulders to roads. And what happens, we make a recommendation to them, you guys make some recommendations to them, and then they'll review those based on their traffic safety data and everything. And then they'll review them for the project. Chester County only has two, so they're looking for projects. We did look at some awkward, or what I would consider an awkward intersection that could be confusing or scissor intersections are one that really causes the most problem. And that's when you pull up to that intersection, you got to look instead of to just to your right, back over your shoulder potentially before you go. So we identified three of those just through some discussions. But that's one of the things that I asked council for in this report, was anything within your districts that you think might be an issue with regard to those widening shoulders, sidewalks? You send them to me, I'll funnel them all into an email. I've already gotten a couple from council. I'll put them all together and send them to the COG for review.
Well, let me, can I, let me ask you a quick question. There's a road in the Ritzburg Fire District called Lynn Road. And it'll knock the front end out under the fire truck. I put that, when we were talking about it, I suggested that we add Lynn Road to see if we could get something done to it, repaved, fixed, or whatever the case may be. Is that, did you just tell me we're going to do that or we're not going to do that?
There's no repaving projects within theirs. Now, that doesn't affect our CTC and what we decide, or what you decide from a CTC standpoint. This is just with the God Share. And I did not see that one. I had a list of what was on there that got removed and I don't remember seeing that one on there. So it wasn't one of their projects.
Just for clarity from our constituents in District Two, this does not include the planned repaving of Dearborn Street in Great Falls, does it?
No, sir, but they did pick an intersection that they do, they had already identified before I even spoke with them, the one, you know, the one when you come into town and it, oh, I don't have my map.
The repaving project was from the monument down to the train depot.
No, sir, it does not include that.
That will go ahead as scheduled.
Right. But what I was saying is they did put an intersection within Great Falls onto the review list. I gave a Robman Sports Complex update. Does anybody want any further information or any questions on Robman?
Could you just go over what, where we stand on it right now? Just a quick overview of that.
So a quick overview. And I'm just going to try to run through this. In August of 2022, Chester County received a cost opinion from Alliance Engineering of $4.355 million. Bids were received on Friday, June 23rd. And that, okay, so, or June of 2023, 23rd of 2023. And so I asked the first question, was that too long between the cost opinion? That's typical amount of time between that cost opinion. However, there should have been another cost opinion that was completed. Bids totaled 4.9 and some change. The big quote does not include alternate biddings, which were for some sidewalk work and soccer fields that could have been in addition. The total amount of our funds that were available for the Robman Sports Complex were 2.9 million from the Gateway, 1.153 from CPST, 150,000 from ATAX, and then less the cost of Alliance Engineering, which leaves us a balance of about $3.5 million for the project. So with the bid on the project coming in at 4.9 million being the lowest bidder and 3.5 being available funds, leaves us with a shortfall of about $1.5 million currently. And so as I state throughout this is, while that is frustrating and there's a lot of things that we can take a look at, causes of this, but we're here. And so it's up to myself and the staff and Mr. Darby and everyone to figure out solutions and how we move forward. And we're working on that. We're working with Alliance, we're working with the winner of the bid. And we're looking at the design. And again, I think this will go back to the need for Chester County to have its own project manager. And we're going to, you know, this again kind of bolsters that. We need somebody to really start looking at our specs when we sat down and kind of went through things after the fact. And, you know, I'll say this, that when I sat down and reviewed the specs and drawings and the plans, from my years and years of just being involved in Little League and U-Sports, I started to see some things that potentially we probably shouldn't, should have called the engineer and said, hey, we don't need this or we don't need that. And I think that is again where we need a specific person to be in charge of these projects. That would have great help. Right now, we've got, you know, four or five people trying to help from different angles, which in turn creates sometimes some of the confusion. So we have a plan and Mr. Darby and myself have been discussing. Our goal is to mitigate the shortfall and then to figure out how to overcome whatever the shortfall is that's left. We have a couple of ideas and things that'll work. We'll bring to council as they develop. We have a meeting set for. I'm sorry, I can't think of the date that the meeting's set for. But I've talked with Alliance a couple of times. I'm waiting back from them right now on S D Clifton's response to some of the, some of the questions we had with regard to the bid.
Well, I hope we're not going to reward poor planning by giving them more money.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And so. Any questions on the, the last thing, I just want to make sure everybody, with regard to the small projects, because I know that was the thing that you guys wanted me to make sure that everybody was aware of with regard to small projects. I did that in this report. There's, one, it's actually already underway. But two, that I wanted you to be, just know about as a council. And if you have any concerns, I have not signed off on those yet. But I think one of them, the one that had to do a commerce drive, it's a solution that will resolve the issue of having to put it on CTC. And we can, I've met with our engineers. And I think this is a good solution to the commerce drive issue, at least for now.
You mentioned the project director. Where, how far are we from that? Where do we stand on making something like that happen? Because I just thought about what Councilman Agee said. If it's poor, if it's poor planning and we got to go back and do some things and we've already paid for some of this planning, we really do need somebody. We need to stop doing this. We need to really focus on getting somebody in this position to, so we won't have these types of problems again. Where are we on having a project? What do you need from us to make that happen?
So that's on me right now at this point to find, to, where we are is we are working on the, if you remember, I had to ask council's approval to create a project manager slash another position. And after, you know, I guess for lack of any better explanation, after spending some time and really reviewing things, that was not a great idea. The project manager needs to be on their own. And so there were some other positions that our HR director position and our Parks, Recreation and Tourism position, that we wanted to get those job descriptions done immediately. We don't have an HR person doing it, myself and Ms. Winters and anybody else. We are kind of working on those job descriptions. We just discussed the project manager position Friday to get it done as quick as possible. We actually already have a rough draft. We just got to kind of hone it in. But with that, the other update I'll tell you is that we have three interviews for our HR director on Wednesday. I thought we had six, but the other three, either commuting to Chester was too much or relocating to Chester was not something they were willing to do. We have posted for the Parks, Recreation and Tourism and we've received some fantastic applicants for that position. So those two are on track pretty well. And so next will be this project manager position. And not to, not to put it off, but without an HR director, it's kind of myself and Ms. Winters doing most of the hiring and interviewing in project or job descriptions for these and trying to just get it going. But that is a priority.
Thank you.
So with that, I've given another two updates on the HR and the Parks, Recreation and Tourism.
Thank you, Mr. Hester, for those updates. That was very informative. Okay, now, now we'll move along to the old business here. Going for the third reading of C C M A 23-06. E J Gallo Winery requests of 0.24 acres of a portion of tax map 165-00-00-066-000 on or near Highway 21, which is Catawba River Road, to be rezoned from Limited Industrial District ID 2 to General Industrial District ID 3. Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve. Motion on that.
I move we approve the Planning Commission approved third reading of C C M A 23-06.
Need a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Agee? Okay, all right, any discussion on that? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay, for the third reading for C C M A 23-08. Clifton Crowley requests tax map number 069-05-25-002-000 at 527 West White Street in Chester, South Carolina, 29706, to be rezoned from multifamily residence district RG 1 to general residential district RG 2. Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve. Any motion on that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the third reading of C C M A 23-08.
All right, motion from Ms. Mosley. Need a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Wilson. Any discussion? Hear no discussion? All in favor of the third reading of C C M A 23-06? Raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous vote. Okay, on the new business, council to approve bid, RFP 22-23-14, dated Lynn Minor Park Field Lighting to West Electrical Contractors out of Newberry, South Carolina, in the amount of $279,520. Ms. Koch.
Good evening again. We put this bid out and received, let's see, five bids, but one of them didn't, did have the wrong bid form, so we could not accept his bid. And we had the base bid plus two alternates. And West Electrical actually had the low bid for all three portions. And we are able to have them do the base bid, which was a large field, the alternate, which was a small field, and the alternate two, which was the monitoring system. And we can actually get all of that done with the, and still be below the one cent sales tax money that we have available.
Ms. Koch, if you don't mind if I follow up with a couple of things from that. So council, just the CPSTC funding, there was $291,190 allocated. These were for replacement lights, replacing poles and lights. So I think they were all wooden poles. And I think the lights were the old metal halo lights. And so I have the specs, if you have any questions about the lighting. Ms. Koch has that as well. We, the county pays the light bill for there, $17 a month, $197 a year roughly. So $17 a month we pay, we would continue to pay that light bill. Not to get off subject, but that brings up a good point. When we approve these fundings for lights, we pay the bill. And so there's several of those that are on tap that we need to consider. Project replaces existing lights as well as adds a monitor. And then we, it's then to a Duke Energy bill that we pay. But if you want any specifics on the specs.
So how many lights are there?
Do we pay Alliance any money for this?
No, sir, actually, in this case, and I'll come back to how many lights there are. Can you look real quick, Susan, on the number of lights?
There's going to be six poles on the large field and four poles on the small field. And the number of lights.
Hang on, I got the. All specs, we did not pay anyone any money for this, Mr. Agee. The contractors actually provided the specs for us and the drawings for it. So we did not have.
We had a pre-bid and all of the contractors, contractors that were there gave us all the information to put on the addendum to help us out. So they actually gave us all the information we needed to help all of each other out. So they were all bidding apples to apples. Unfortunately, this is a little too small for me to read. I can't read it.
It's a, I can.
On the lights, the number of lights.
Yeah, I'm looking for it too in here. It replaces the existing, we're not adding, but I'm looking at the poles. Looks like eight, counting for both fields, unless I'm missing one.
I know there was, there was supposed to be, should be, I think they were going to use one of the poles to, six, yeah, there was going to be nine because.
Nine.
Originally, there was, if we were only going to be able to do one of the fields, they were going to do six poles. But they were going to use one of the poles to use for the small field and the large field. They were going to put the lights on both sides. So that's where the, there was only one pole versus, for those two fields, so.
They're actually termed high-performance sports lighting, 1,000 lumens. And they, I've got some drawings with directional of the lights and so forth.
All right, any other questions?
These fields are used a lot. They're the ball fields that the town of Great Falls, the only ball fields the town of Great Falls has other than the Republic Field. And for the smaller kids, this is where they play ball. And we really need two more ball fields down there so all the kids could play. So this is a, this is a huge deal for Great Falls to have these lights replaced. There's a lot more to do.
And it came in under budget?
Yeah, that's huge.
I don't know if this means anything to anybody, but there were at least 50-foot candles in the infield and 30-foot candles in the outfield that has to do with the lights.
Sounds bright to me.
So that's what they told us to use. So thankful for these contractors.
So, so, so the contractors are the ones who help y'all know what you actually need?
Yes, yes.
That's another reason why we need a project manager.
Yes. But this...
These are updated too?
Yeah.
With what was...
I mean, they all agreed, this is what was needed for this kind of field. And we looked, did some research as well on our own with what they gave us. So this was all what these fields...
I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is, you get a group of contractors in a room, everybody knows, everybody knows the language. I'm not saying it's not the best thing.
Right.
But if you get one contractor that said, okay, well, this LED light is better and it's fifty thousand dollars, all the rest of the contractors will agree because they know, hey, this is the fifty thousand dollar light, this is what we want, we can make more money off this light.
We had different manufacturers.
So I guess what I'm getting at is, if we have a project manager, we have somebody that's on our side, they can do the research as well.
Right.
And say, that's correct, without us just having to go on what the people who are bidding that we're paying, what they suggest.
Right.
We need somebody that...
Someone that works for us.
I'm not saying what you, what you research is not right, but it's saying to protect us, it's another reason why we need a project manager.
Agreed.
I mean, this did save us money. You know, we could have hired an engineer, but we, we actually looked into getting an engineer, but they said it would cost too much. It was actually Alliance. They said you can't afford to pay an engineer. So they said, here's some information, here's some contractors. So we started that way and did it ourselves so that we could save money. But we had different lighting vendors out there too. And so we didn't just have one, we had multiple, to get multiple information, to get different information. So we just put it all together. And I think this should be good.
You need a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Need a second?
Second, Ms. Mosley.
Any further discussions? Hear no further discussion, we'll go ahead and take a vote on this for Lex Minus Ball Field, the lighting contract to West Electrical Contract out of Newberry. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along to B under nine, council to approve a two-year contract for the SHI in the amount of thirty thousand, thirty thousand four hundred dollars for nine-one-one. Sheriff Max Dorsey, I think he would like to show a three-minute film on this, so if we got that, we'll...
Well, I was, but we had some technological difficulties, so instead of, instead of the video being able to explain it in three minutes, I'm going to do my best in thirty seconds. So, so, but I do think it's fair, I'll tell you kind of a quick story. So a few months ago, I asked our nine-one-one director, Doug McMurray, I said, hey, can, can people text nine-one-one? Can they send pictures to nine-one-one? And he said, no. And it was an article that I'd read about, O'Conne County Sheriff had started this new company, well, had, had adopted this platform, this technology platform in his nine-one-one center. And, and didn't really pay much attention about, to it, other than, you know, that's something with technology moving forward, we need to have that ability. Well, fast forward to about the end of May, first of June, certainly outside of our budget prep here, ran across this company called Prepared, Prepared nine-one-one. It's a technology company. And, and what they do is they offer, they enable citizens to use their cell phones to improve the nine-one-one process. They, they allow the sharing of live video, photo, and GPS location with emergency nine-one-one dispatchers. And so really became interested in that, had them come and do a demo about mid-June, first of mid-June, and, and really, really liked the product. And, and what this is, is imagine you are on I-77 and you run up on a wreck. You can call nine-one-one, talk to that dispatcher, and with your permission, that dispatcher can text you a link. With your permission, you have to enable that link. Your phone becomes a live feed video that is piped back to dispatch. And that dispatcher can see that scene right then, and they can relay that information to those first responders responding to that call. I want you to think about that and think of all the benefits of that. Think about how, and I've got a little cheat sheet here, communicate, you can show your accident or injury. So if something happens, you can enable that phone immediately, and if there's a gunshot, a head wound or whatever, that information can be shown to that dispatcher immediately through a live feed. It helps operators when you, when, finds you when you're lost. You can share your GPS location, but you know, depending on the service of where you are, we have a lot of rural area in our county, that GPS may be five thousand yards from your location. So you can send that feed back to dispatch and it shows that, oh, there's the QT sign, so you're east of the QT sign or the McDonald's sign or whatever. And so it, it gives us better tools to find you. It helps firefighters. I've never been a firefighter, but I can imagine it would be nice to know, is this a campfire or is this a forest fire?
As a firefighter, I agree with that statement.
I'm sure, I'm sure that would be very beneficial. And then certainly, you know, Mike, if, if you would be able to size up whether or not you need to send one truck or, or the whole, or the whole battalion.
I, I will gladly add to this, and I had no...
And I'm not hating.
I had no preparation for this. We, we actually had an incident on the interstate where they said there was a massive wreck and there was some type of truck involved. Knowing that it was a gasoline tanker, which it was, would have been greatly beneficial for our planning than when we pulled up and saw that, it was probably you that said, jeez, it's full of gasoline. That's a terrifying moment not to be prepared. We get a lot of times where we're told it's at the fifty-eight mile marker, we go all the way down to the fifty-eight, and we find out it's actually at the sixty-eight. Or the latest thing that's been happening, which you could probably attest to, is these new cell phones, when you drop them in your car, the cellphone then tells OnStar or whoever that you're in a horrible accident, even though you just dropped your phone. The ability for us to know that it was not an accident i- is priceless. So kudos, we...
We endorse this completely.
Thank you, thank you. I'll buy your supper tonight. So, so what's cool about this is we're one of the first agencies in South Carolina to do this. The Highway Patrol, I just spoke with their director two hours ago, and they are actually in the process of implementing this throughout the South Carolina Highway Patrol. I've not talked with DNR, but it's my understanding that the Department of Natural Resources is also implementing this technology. It, it's a, it's an application, it's a plat, technology platform that integrates with our CAD system and our dispatch center. And, and I just, I just think it's a way to enhance our ability to, to keep people safe in Chester County. So my intention was to do all this, so let me back up. So the, the, the price that they gave us, so they gave us a price, standard pricing, but they said if we would agree to a three-year contract with them by the end of June, then they would give us a better price. Well, I can't enter into a multi-year contract without your approval. And as much as I tried to do this, and Karen Lee threatened my life several times about not getting the paperwork to her, and it, it wasn't my fault, I promise, but we just, we just weren't able to get the contract and everything done. So we were not able to do this before the end of June. So what, so the, the deal that we agreed to with Prepared was that I signed the one-year contract. So we're in, we're in the process of implementing Prepared for the Chester Sheriff's Office Dispatch for one year. That's, that's, that, and that price is fifteen thousand two hundred dollars. Now, I didn't ask for that in my budget because I didn't know about this. So I'm going to have to find that money this year to pay for that fifteen thousand out of my existing funds. What I'm asking for, oh, so, but Prepared understood, you know, my, the things that I had to go through to get this approved properly. So they have extended my ability to receive that discounted price for an additional two years, and it also, it locks us into that price. So what I'm asking your approval for tonight is really weird, but this is just the way we got to do it. I'm asking for your approval really for two years from now. I know I will have to ask for this in my budget come next go-around, and you can, you can deny it or fund it. I guess the request is for us to be able to enter into this two-year contract. But I guess I'm not necessarily asking for the funding because that would be inappropriate at this time. Of course, it would have been easier if we could have just done a three-year contract, this is what I'm asking for, but that's, that's not the case, just because of all the stuff we had to go through. So I know probably in your packet, you have a quote here, pricing proposal, it says SHI. That's the vendor that we're going through. So Prepared, think of Prepared as the technology platform, SHI is the vendor that we're going through, and the reason we're going through that is because they are an omnia partner. So because this is under an omnia contract, buying contract, that's why we're able to do this without having to put it out for bid. Although, the company said that they would also provide me with a sole source letter if necessary, but I don't think that's necessary because they're an omnia partner.
So what you're asking for tonight is actually the fifteen thousand two hundred dollars?
Well, no, sir, because I, again, I've already, I've entered into that as the sheriff with that contract for this year. And, and, and no, I don't have that, I've not made that a request in this budget year. I'm going to have to find that money in my existing funds. But it's, it's that, it's that big of a deal. It's that important that I'm going to do that. Just because I think it's a service that our citizens can benefit from. This is new technology, and it's going to take a lot of informing our community of what it can and can't do. There are a lot of other things that I would encourage you to go on Google, or I'll, I'll send you all some links. There's a lot of good news stories out there. There's some articles about how these things, how this technology has really helped public safety, it's, it's helped citizens.
Have you heard anything about how it works? And say, for instance, just give an example, let's say, for instance, we're all at Walmart and we see something bad happen, and ten people text us to nine-one-one dispatch. Is it, is it able to record the video of all ten people?
It is, and, and it, it all goes up in the cloud. It is CGIS compliant, so has all those security measures that we require. It is foliable, and we've, we talked to them how that would happen, and it's a pretty simple process, actually.
So it's basically no different than if you were to have a, well, I don't know, I guess that would be your body camera?
Yeah.
It would be similar to that?
It, it would be the same thing. It's, it's just you're an extension of that body camera.
And it's recorded, you said, on the cloud? I was trying to think of scenarios.
Right. And, and you can imagine an active shooter, every line in that dispatch center is going to light up.
Yeah.
But unless you get that link, and unless you enable that link yourself, we're not going to be able to do it. And that link has an end time, you, so it is all up to you. You can enable that link and you can also disable that link.
So another question is, if I, as a citizen, I like the idea, but I'm just asking these questions, if I, as a citizen, decide to record something that's happening, and they send me the link, how do, and, and I'm naive about this, I'm not at this council meeting, but I found out about this link, and I do this, what, does it give me some type of disclaimer as a citizen that my phone can be for you because I submitted to this link?
No, your phone would not be for you, just that data that you recorded.
Just the data.
Uploaded, that's right.
Okay, so the phone itself is not for you?
And this company is very clear in, in their explanation of us that it doesn't access your contacts or your text or your photos or none of that. It is simply accessing that camera that you give it permission to. And, and there are also things in there where we can automatically have it cut off after so long. And again, these are things that we're, we're going to have to talk with O'Conne County and Highway Patrol and see what their policies are. But in the end, it's, it's ultimately up to the user. The user can cut it off. And, and are, is everybody going to use this? No. Most of the calls that come into nine-one-one are, are dealt with verbally, but imagine those active shooters. They even have examples where video is being taken of someone being, well, having CPR performed on them, and the hands weren't in the right place. And so the dispatcher can say, move your hands up two inches, or, or things like that.
So will this allow the public to text nine-one-one?
Yes.
In, in addition, I understand the link, but as far as if you, if you have a problem, you don't want to make the phone call, you want to be quiet about it, you can text nine-one-one using the software.
And that's really where this started, that, I heard about that.
And you can send pictures, you can send images.
You can send texts, you can text in a foreign language.
And they can text back.
And they can text back. And, and the, and the system will automatically convert it to whatever language. You don't even have to say, are you speaking whatever? The system picks up what you are, what language you're interpreting. So yes, and you can even utilize that camera and, and, and go into a dark mode to where, you know, imagine a domestic violence situation where the, the, the bad guys, you know, saying or threatening the victim. All that can happen through that, that link, and then it, you can go in a dark mode where it looks like the phone's off.
Is it possible to abuse it?
So I, I think because we're all human, I'm, I'm sure there could be, you know...
I think about the nine-one-one dispatchers, are, is there some hidden abuse coming down the road there?
I, I, I can't, just off the top of my head, I can't, we, 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 we had a big meeting about this and we kind of went around the room, and, and I asked everybody, how can this help you in your department? We even talked about the fire service, we talked about EMS, all these other first responders, and, you know, the, to be honest, it's going to, it's going to put more work on the dispatchers.
Yeah.
And, and so we're going to have to, we're going to have to work through all that, and they're already overworked. But we're talking about obtaining valuable evidence through those pictures, you know, a picture's worth a thousand words.
It seems to me like fire and EMS would probably use it more than the police.
Honestly, I, I think so.
Therefore, fire ought to be some part of finance, and that EMS should be some part of finance, and that we're getting into the budget process. The only thing that I do have a question about is HIPAA. There, there are some times you just don't need a picture.
Right.
And, and that is a real serious problem if somebody takes a picture that violates HIPAA.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I don't, I'm not as well-versed in HIPAA as maybe I should be, but I, I kind of look at what Ms. Mosley said, it's, it's like a body cam that a cop would wear. Certainly, that individual is not a medical provider, so HIPAA wouldn't necessarily apply to them. Now, maybe the storage of that information, when it gets on that server, would have some, HIPAA would have some ramifications on that, but it's, it's as secure as our criminal justice information would be. So that's when I say CGIS compliant.
Yeah, because I think some people just take pictures anyway regardless of the link, they still do things that they probably shouldn't.
Right. This, this is, we think this is a really big deal. We want to make sure the community understands what it can do, what it can't do. But, but I think it's going to be able to inform our first responders of what's going on on that scene in, in a better way.
To be clear, we cannot text right now, right?
We cannot text right now, Ms.?
All righty, let's, do you want this here motion read exactly the way it's written here, or is it, it sound like it's...
So...
It's a real confusion, it's really a three-year contract, basically you, you're going to fund the eleven...
Would, would...
Fifteen, you're going to fund the fifteen, two, fifteen thousand two hundred dollars out of this year's budget, you're going to find it, but what you're... You gonna find it, but what you're asking for is for two more years at, uh, thirty thousand, four hundred.
So Sheriff, what I, what I think you're asking for is for council, uh, as it's written, as Mr. Brownham identified, to approve a two-year contract to S H I in the amount of thirty thousand, four hundred dollars that you'll ask, subsequently ask for in next year's budget.
Right.
Is that accurate?
I, I think that is a very good way to put it, yes, ma'am.
And just, just to be clear, they are not wanting the other monies until the following year. That's a yearly subscription.
That's, that's correct. Um, we pay annually and, um, there's an escape clause if I'm not funded. Uh, now technically, I'm not funded now, so I'm gonna, I'm finding that money. But if, if you chose not to fund me next year, that would be a cause for me to get out of the contract.
Non-appropriation.
So is it any way that, I mean, is it necessary that we do that now and just wait till the next budget year to do it?
Well, I think Sheriff needs to sign it now to lock it in.
Right.
He has to enter now.
Right.
The permission for the multi-year contract from us.
All right. I would ask, I, I think that was a, that was well said. If, if you wanna, I, I would just ask that you make it broad. Um, certainly specific to two years, but, um, that, that you just allow us to enter to a multi-year contract that will expire, and I guess at the end of the twenty twenty-six fiscal year.
And you'll, you'll ask for funding in the coming budget year?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right, I might wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve a multi-year contract ends in two thousand twenty-six with S H I. Sheriff Max Gordon.
Thank you.
Second, any, any further discussion?
One more, one more thing. So I was just reading about it and, and it says, it looks to me like you can't actually start the call via text. Is that accurate or do you believe you can? So if, if you need help, if you need help, you actually have to call first and then work through the link in order to text back and forth. You can't actually text help.
Is that right?
Okay, so that's just a clarity we need to be sure the public understands so they're not trying to text nine-one-one.
Yeah.
Instead of picking up the phone and calling nine-one-one. They have to get the link before they can share data or text.
And, and there's a whole, um, deployment packet.
Reasons for that, probably.
On how to educate people out, about it, so, uh, so we'll have to.
Could the link, could the link be put out on the sheriff's department website or Facebook? And whoever wants to download it before something happens?
Nothing to download. It's all speci, it's all, um, incident-specific.
Okay, so there's not an, it's not an app?
No, no, it's not an app or anything. It's, it's gotta be initiated, hello nine-one-one.
And then the link is sent.
Can I send you a link? Yes, you get the link that way. Uh, yeah, and, and it ends, that, it ends at that incident.
Oh, so it has to start again?
So are some communities allowing texting to, to initiate the call for, for help? Or is that not, is that not a thing?
I didn't pick up on that, um, Joe Payton.
I just wanna be clear, because I don't want someone to hear about this and think that they can suddenly text nine-one-one and that's, that's not the case.
So, so what's gonna happen? You, you call nine-one-one from your cell phone and they'll say, hey, we're gonna send you a link by text. Is that all right? And they'll say, yes, send you the link. You have to activate that link to start anything. So just texting nine-one-one is not gonna work. You have to call, physically call and then they activate it and send you a link. Then you have to, uh, accept that link.
All right, is that good?
We'll, we'll, we'll be sure to educate everybody about it, but, um.
We'll probably have to have a workshop on it.
I hope not. We, we'll just watch videos. We'll just watch videos. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we got a, uh, motion and a second on this. Uh, it, I think we had already in discussion. If you don't have any more in discussion, call for a vote on it. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye? A hundred percent, all, all in favor on that. Okay, moving along to C. Uh, council to approve award, uh, from an F E M A grant for a new ambulance to Richburg Fire Department in the amount of, uh, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-one cent with a five percent match of eleven thousand, two hundred and five dollars and sixty-four cents from Mr. Mike. I'm, I'm gonna try this, Mike. Herman, Herman Alk?
Assistant Chief Mike is fine with me.
He's dead, he went to the school.
Don't, don't ask, don't ask John to tell you the story because it's, it's long and you'll be here all night. Good e, good evening, everybody. So approximately four years ago, uh, we started a process, a long process to deal with an issue that we had with EMS delivery in the eastern part of the county. Uh, there were times where we were spending up to forty-five minutes waiting for an ambulance. And at no fault of EMS, just there were times when there were no ambulances available at all, anywhere in the county. And we were either waiting for an ambulance from somewhere else, a different county, or waiting for an ambulance to come available. Uh, we met with our partners with both, uh, not just EMS. We met with our partners who had the same issue in Great Falls and Fort Lawn and, and in Lando Fire District. And we said, uh, let's come up with a solution. And that solution is we, we started an ambulance service. It was not intended to be a primary ambulance. It was a backup to the existing county structure. We did it with the support of EMS. Uh, Britt and his staff helped us with training and the many, many, many licenses and inspections that we had to go through. We started with a leased ambulance from A M R. We transitioned into a ten-year-old ambulance that we currently have. But at about, uh, let's see, it was twenty twenty, we wrote a grant through the FEMA's Assistance to Firefighter Program. And they actually had a high priority for a change in service to add EMS to your service. And we were fortunate to be awarded the grant. I do have some changes to those numbers that you read, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the grant was actually for one hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and ninety cents with a match of nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ten cents. So the numbers there, I transpose the numbers. The ambulance actually cost us two hundred and twenty-four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-one cents. And that's what, in your packet, you can see the actual contract price and the purchase order for the ambulance. Uh, the grant was for a lesser amount. Uh, the amount that we're asking for is the match for the federal grant of ninety-eight, ninety-five and ten cents. Uh, the difference we will be paying for, hopefully we can sell our used ambulance and that sale of that ambulance will pay for that difference so that there will be, uh, no balance left on that.
Chief, chief, why, why are you selling that ambulance instead of just keeping that ambulance and having two in Richburg? Is it ness, do you just wanna get rid of that ambulance?
Uh, well, as with most things that are old and, and, uh, creaky, we, we just spent, uh, I think we just spent a thousand dollars on an air compressor for the air condenser for the air conditioning. Um, as with anything that's ten years old, it's starting to have problems. Uh, we've had problems with the air conditioner, we've had problems with some of the lights. So it is a good time that while it has value and the nice part about the value of it right now is that if we, if we sell it now while it's functioning and we can get that money back that will pay for whatever balance that we have on this truck, we're not gonna have anything owed on that truck and we certainly don't have to try to find a funding mechanism for that.
So what I'm getting at is what do you think you're gonna get for the old ambulance?
Right now, we have it advertised for twenty thousand. Uh, we paid, actually, maybe I shouldn't say what we paid for it.
Well, my point is with, with, with what we, what we plan and what we see happening in Chester County and Richburg here in the future. And just recently, we had, how many houses we just, we were talking about a month ago? Maybe over a thousand houses coming. I see it as maybe we keeping that ambulance because we're looking for some growth in, in the Richburg area. I think it's gonna eventually happen and then if you've got two ambulances, it's better than having, having one, so my, my.
We would be very happy to sell you an ambulance for bargain basement price of sixteen thousand dollars.
My, my thing is, yeah, that's kinda what I'm getting at. I see what you're saying, you know, so, I don't know, that's just a thought that I'm, I'm having. Why, why sell it when we, maybe we need that? Maybe we need it.
Sure, I mean, we can certainly entertain that.
Probably manning the thing would be another problem with it.
I'm sorry, what?
Uh, manning it, putting people on it to run it, it, two at the same time simultaneously, I mean.
Yeah, that, that, uh, that would be a separate discussion. Um, you know, certainly having it as a backup, whether it be, uh, staff from a.
Just, you know, and us bettering ourselves, that, I mean, in the Richburg area, you, let's say, for instance, you got a, something going on on I seventy-seven. But then you've got someone, an elderly person sick in Richburg.
Sure.
And then you've got the ambulance that's tied up in Chester. It's just better for our citizens to have, have that option of having two ambulances, whether it's old or not.
Right.
If it's running and they can get somebody to, to the hospital.
Absolutely.
For twenty thousand dollars, it's just not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things.
For less than that.
Yeah, it's just not a lot of money in the grand scheme of things when you, when you're talking about.
Sure, we, we would love to entertain that.
I, I mean, I just, if it's running.
I guess I see it a little differently, you know? When things start to age, sometimes the best thing you can do, I always, always keep things too long. I have a bad habit of that. And sometimes if you get rid of it before you spend a lot of money on that transmission or that engine, you're, you're better for it. You know, if we need a, more service in Richburg or anywhere in the county, let's have that discussion and let's do it right with, with newer equipment.
It has, it has a hundred and fifty-six thousand miles. I think it's, uh, fourteen thousand hours on the engine.
And what's, what's typical, what's typical use and mileage and hours on the ambulance?
Well, I think our, some of our county ambulances in that last, before they've started the replacement schedule, were up to half a million miles on them.
Exactly, so you're not up to a half a million yet.
They, but they were, uh, I think they were held together with baling twine and, and chewing gum and they were MacGyvered together.
I mean, I'm, I'm just one person, but my, my thought is if we, you, you're talking about two hundred and some thousand dollars for an ambulance.
Correct, correct.
We, we look at it again, we gotta think about another two hundred and some thousand dollars for an ambulance. Right now, we've got one. We're not saying operate the ambulance, but it's there.
As a reserve.
Yeah, it's there as a reserve. You're getting rid of an ambulance that you can use, that you could possibly use and we're just getting rid of it just to say, just because we, we say it's old. I, I mean, I'm just one person, but I just, I think we should try to probably keep it.
We, we can certainly entertain that.
Until we get to that point, yeah, and then we get to the point where we say we buy another one, then we get rid of it.
Right, our, our, our issue in the interim would be coming up with that funding to pay that balance.
We have to discuss that.
There's also a, a consideration for the cost to keep it in terms of insurance and, and upkeep.
And then they don't want it to break down taking nobody to no hospital, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, the, the other issue is that all of the county ambulances were upgraded to a power load stretcher system, which saves the back of the medic and the paramedic on the truck by lifting that stretcher up.
Approved that, right.
Correct. Um, the, our new truck will have that system. The existing truck, the older truck does not. Uh, and I believe, I think that was about a forty thousand dollar investment to put that in. So it, it would be, uh.
Just trying to help your department have more of that ambulance where you don't want.
I, I very much appreciate that. And, you know, certainly as stewards, uh, we're, we're trying to save as much as we can as well.
I promised myself I wasn't gonna say anything.
Uh, you're violating that promise.
We just approved buying a new ambulance, EMS, for three hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. We just, we just did that. We just approved purchasing a new ambulance, EMS, for three hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight dollars plus the stretcher for thirty-three thousand, twenty-eight dollars and a chassis, eighty-two thousand, eight hundred. So we got about a half million dollars in an ambulance and we got about two hundred and fifty thousand in an ambulance in Richburg. Now, I'm not jumping up and down, I'm just saying those, those are facts and figures. If, if you're gonna keep the ambulance, then it's gotta be maintained, Mr. Gav. Somebody's gotta, if, if you're gonna pay insurance, you gotta keep it licensed by D H E C. As, as Mike just said, there's nothing wrong with all that as long as everybody's under them understanding that all of those little tidbits of things has to be taken care of. Are there enough ambulances in Chester County? By no stretch of the imagination is the answer yes. Mr. Wilson has an area out in West Chester where there's a desperate need for an ambulance. I mean, it's like on October the eighteenth, if I remember right, October the eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, Mr. Armor Trap was coming through Lockhart, they had a cardiac arrest in Crossroads and nobody was available except Mr. T J Martin. Mike turned around and went and helped do CPR. There needs to be a plan, as, as you, you have said and, and we've said, that you sit down and figure all this stuff out before you just make a decision. Um, I agree with Mr. Wilson, we just spent a whole bunch of money buying fire trucks that nobody asked anybody about. And so, all right, I, I don't know, I, I would be honest.
It was just my, it was just a suggestion. I just, I was just looking at, you know, getting rid of the ambulance and just having maybe two in that area. But if, if you're the chief, if you don't want it.
I'm just the assistant chief.
Yeah. You don't want it, that's fine, but.
The ambulance came from founder's credit. They wrote a check for it, didn't cost the county anything. All righty, let's move it right along here then, uh.
So just one thing to add, Mr. Chairman. We did check with Mr. Darby, who's gonna give, uh, his thumbs up because he, he did say that, uh.
For eleven thousand, two, two oh five?
There, there it is. That would be for the nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ten cents. And I added, uh.
That's what we, uh.
You all got an addendum to your packets, I think so. It would be that, uh, required non-federal resources section.
I know our, on our sheet here, it says that the match will be eleven thousand, two oh five. Is that correct or is it the nine?
No, you, you should have gotten an addendum sheet.
That's what this other sheet, okay.
That's correct. So the, the amount would be the required non-federal resources of nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ten cents.
Okay, all right, need a motion on that?
I'll move that we approved a matching grant for, in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ten cents for the new ambulance to Richburg Fire Department.
You got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Vaughn, any more discussion? You hear no more discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
You're not in the vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Since I can't pronounce your last name. Okay, all righty, uh, moving along to D, the approval of performance bond for Walker's Mill. Ms. Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, council, you have in your packet, uh, a subdivision bond estimate. This is something we require at every phase of any subdivision or demolition. It's a performance bond that, um, if the developer for one reason or another fails to complete the project, this bond is an insurance policy. Um, we, you can see the, the bottom bond amount is one hundred and twenty-five percent of the construction costs that are, are in place. And so that's our protective device if this developer, um, walks off the job, goes bankrupt, whatever. Uh, this is an insurance policy that we cash in and we have done this in the past, not so much on a, on a development, but we've done it for, um, the Eureka. Some of you will remember the demolition of the Eureka. We got a performance bond and we did cash it in. This is obviously substantially more. This is for six million, one sixty-four, two fifty and sixteen cents. Um, but that's what, uh, this is coming before you tonight for approval. It, it gets sent to me by Mr. Levister just for, um, legal review, but it ultimately has to be approved by this council.
How much is that one total on that B?
It is.
Two twenty-four?
No, this is, this is the bond amount is six million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty and sixteen cents. That's the amount of the bond. That's how much that we'll have, um, to protect us from this development not being completed.
All right, you got a motion on that?
So why is this coming to us now? Is this because they're about to begin construction and that's a requirement of their P D?
Yes, sir, and this is phase three for them. So this, this just covers their phase three. A lot of it's concrete sewer work, the street level sewer, not the infrastructure sewer. So before they are permitted to begin, they have to present the bond and the bond, um, goes into effect when they finish. So we have it and, and it transcends two years beyond their completion. So it goes into place when they begin and then even after they complete it, it, it sits for two years.
Need a motion on that to put it up for discussion?
I move that we approve the, uh, performance bond for Walker's Mill.
Second.
Second, got a motion and a second on that, is any further discussion? I think Ms. Wynn has explained in fair and well what, what's in the, what's in the deal there for it. It's a little over six million dollars to put up that performance bond. So, uh, here, no more discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. All right, moving along to boards of commission. I appoint, uh, T. Melton to the Gateway Steering Committee by the county council. Need a motion on that?
I make a motion. We appoint T. Melton to the Gateway Steering Committee.
Second?
Uh, second.
Second, from Mr. Guy. Any comment? Discussion? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
All right.
Aye. You're not in the vote. Okay, to appoint Mr. Odell Steele to the Gateway Steering Commission. Need a motion on that?
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, Mr. AG, give a second?
Second.
Second, from Ms. Mosley. Uh, any discussion? Hear none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So be it. Okay, uh, I believe, uh, Mr. Wilson has, uh, want to accept the resignation for Mr. Ralph E. Lunsford?
Yeah, so, um, thank you. I would, uh, move that we accept the resignation of, um, Mr. Ralph E. Lunsford, known as Trip, um, from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee effective July thirtieth.
All right. Need a second?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Vaughn. Any discussion?
So Mr. Lunsford is, uh, moving out of, out of town. And so he, uh, he will no longer be able to serve, but he's been, he's been an asset to that board. And we certainly appreciate him, his, his willingness to serve there.
All righty. All in favor of the accepting Mr. Lunsford's resignation, right hand, right hand and say aye.
Aye.
You're not in the vote. Okay, uh, for the executive session, we're going, uh, we're going, going into the executive session for economic development matter on project, uh, twenty-three, forty-one and discuss the personnel matter regarding, uh, administration. All need a vote, motion on that?
I make that motion.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Be in executive session.